Since there's only three or four speakers, we'll do three minutes per speaker.
And I'm so tired right now, it doesn't matter at this point. But, uh, welcome again, seeing you guys again, it's late.
Mr. Sadiq, give me one second, the clock is not up. And also, just to respect the order, was Mr. Zeitz before? Yeah, okay, sorry, Mr. Sadiq, if we can have Mr. Zeitz.
Good evening. Been a very long meeting, I'm glad that the council got together and worked out these hashes. I'm just so happy that it's done and so disappointed that it has taken the new mayor to do this. Our old mayor had nothing to do with it. Didn't want to change, he wanted his dictatorship. Now... Back to it though, but like I said, I'm glad we've worked this all out, things are going. What I'd like to also bring up, maybe on another agenda when it comes to what city council can do, is possibly put a cost limitations on campaign funds. That way you can get a normal resident to come in and be able to run, and not have corporations and developers and everything buy the seats. That way you get some people up there that actually live in the city and are not obligated to people. Again, back to, get my train of thought back. With this... Senior moment, sorry. And you're like an idiot. Left my notebook in the back, okay.
We can stay here till midnight if you like.
Huh? What's that?
We can stay here till midnight if you like.
No, it's okay, I'm good. Um, just like I said, I'm glad that it's probably done and it's done correctly. Um, and there's concessions with it. I do think we should stop the bickering on the daisies. Again, I do feel that it was a good thing that it was done, and the mayor has stepped up and done it with the support of the council, or vice versa. In that stating with, he said, he was elected to this job. If you are hired, or elected, or put into a job, you don't go into the job in six months as a deputy, and then turned around and says, "No, that's not your job anymore." You're hired to do this job, you've been put into this to do this job. I think it's, it needed to be done. I think what we should have done was set this up so when the new mayor comes in, knowing he's coming into this office, what his duties are, and not have him changed on him once he gets in here. I think that's irresponsible, unethical, but it's a good thing that it is done. So in the future, if we want to make these drastic changes, or changes, we should consider, these people have been elected to these positions, and when the people voted, they knew what power they had. And to step on that, then you're becoming the dictator. Okay? You guys have a good evening.
Donovan Sadiq, followed by Tom Gerald Senior, followed by Roy Blackard.
Man, I was having a senior moment there too, these things are going along. They shouldn't be no more than two and a half hours if we know what we're doing. But, uh, in regard to that, yeah, I'm glad this got resolved as well. But, you know, Mayor, you're always saying that, and I just kind of happen to know this, that you're always saying that you were elected by a certain group of people. If you're elected the mayor, you represent everybody. Doesn't matter if I didn't vote for you or not. You're supposed to represent everybody, and I'm in District One, which is a, uh, area that I live in, in District One, Edgemont is a very lowly, you know, unincorporated area, whatever, whatever you want to call it. So we don't get a lot of representation, a lot of our resources were taken out of that area for the benefit of the growth of the city, as you may know. So you're supposed to represent me as well. So when it comes to the planning commissions and all that other stuff, you should be looking out for the underrepresented areas, especially. You know, I, I mean, I get offended when I see people from the Marina Beach Drive talking about, "Our architecture in the streets isn't correct." And I've got people in my neighborhood that don't even have sidewalks to walk on. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so there's a disconnect there. So if you're going to be the mayor, you represent everybody. It doesn't matter who voted for you, who didn't vote for you, now you're the mayor. And I, like I said, I hate to lecture, I hate to beat you up, but you got to understand, you're a little young, you've got to understand, you represent everybody. Not just these people who voted for you. And if, and if that's how you're talking, you're, you're kind of sounding like a pay-for-play. "Well, you elected me, so I got to represent these people over here, because I know Jimmy Joe over there, I know he voted for me, so I got to make sure he gets what he wants to get." No, it doesn't work that way. I don't expect Ed Delgado to do anything for me, because he's not my representative. I don't. My representative is Lena Baca Santa Cruz. But when this position was, uh, was incorporated to have a, a elected mayor, that mayor was supposed to be at large for everybody. So you got to stop with this, "The people that elected me," whatever, it doesn't matter at this point, you're the mayor. Move it forward. I'm glad that you're starting to learn to compromise, that's important. You've got to compromise, because you're not going to get 100% of anything in the world. So, so you're learning that, I'm giving you props on that. You've got some great people up there to learn from. Not everybody's a dictator. You could be a dictator all you want, but let me tell you, there's a guy named, recently in history, named Muammar Gaddafi, look what happened to him. You know, so you got to be careful in what you want to do and how you want to ram things through. Continue to work on a compromise, and fix these problems that you were elected to fix. Thank you.
Tom Gerald Senior, followed by Roy Blackard and Luis Palomeros.
Tom, excuse me, Tom Gerald Senior, speaking again on behalf of myself, Mayor Cabrera, Mayor Pro Tem Delgado, council members, members of staff and the public. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Before I begin, I, uh, allow me, I want to give some kudos to our city attorney. I was thinking as you were speaking, you know, I've heard a lot of them say a lot over the years, but I don't remember the quality of presentation and the in-depth explanation in a sense that the average citizen could understand it. And I really commend our city attorney, he does a wonderful job, and I thank him. And I also want to commend, uh, council members, Elena Baca Santa Cruz and Shailena Bernard for a lot of good input. You're the kind of newbies on the council, and you've come up with some really good stuff. I'm very impressed, so, and I'm not saying that for any, I'm not for any appointments or anything, I don't have any projects coming to you guys, so I just like your stuff, you're doing a good job, and I encourage you. Whether you get, you know, you sway the council or not, you know, continue doing what you're doing. Giving a lot of good insight. You know, councils change, majorities change, policies change. And Mayor, uh, things are different now than it was with, uh, your predecessor. And he had, bluntly, he had a different majority. Like I said, it was a different temperament. I didn't like that slate, you know, with him, with anybody. But, as I said, it was essential to get a properly elected mayor, something we fought for for years. And with candidly, a lot of council resistance. I can remember them making fun, I remember Charlie White ridiculing the crowd one night, and he says, "I don't know where these people get these ideas, people want a mayor, I talk to people, and I don't hear it, and I don't hear..." Well, and they ran a poll, and it was like, I don't know, 70% of the public wanted it. So, as I said, it was important we got that for continuity of mission, and so on and so forth. As I said, I think a lot of your problems go back to that October 19th meeting. Uh, I was here, it was not a good call. And as I said, uh, and I shared with you, uh, you know, a great man in history, Winston Churchill, had a huge debacle in World War I, and with Gallipoli. And I suggest you read that, and, you know, but he came back. I mean, he saw from his Arab ways, he got a lot of flak for a long time, but thank God he came back and learned from his, uh, mishaps in that episode, and helped us win a very important World War, and bring, uh, you know, the world we have, and, you know, I mean, it still has its issues, but, you know, thank God we're not saying Hitler today. So I thank you all, and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Roy Blackard, followed by Luis Palomeros.
Can we please, please, please spend six more hours talking about freaking proclamations? This shows exactly what the problem is in this city. This whole thing, I've had it, and again, why don't you pull a FOIA request from the city clerk? Look at all the stuff I've said about reorganizing these meetings, getting the conflicts out, re-investigating the rules and procedures of this council, which all should have been done at one time, so we're not going to piecemeal this. You know why there's not projects on the agenda coming to this town? It's precisely because of that, in a major way. We got to have a staff that starts running this city, like the California Constitution says. You ought to read it, and you ought to read the responsibilities of how this is supposed to work, because it doesn't work here. It's slightly moving that, I will give you a little bit of credit, but we got still a long way to go. And that's determined by you five. You can speed the process up like that. You direct this staff to start doing, "This is the way we're going to do it." You watch how fast things happen. That's as simple as it get. And the mayor knows this when he was on the junket with the former mayor in Florida. "How quick did we get the homeless-to-work program? I told you how to do it, got done in three months." You never... Where's the staff report when we did that? Where was it looking? Why didn't you bring that up? Because that's just how simple it is. We don't have to endure this. That's a choice you all are making. The evidence is there, you've run through it, you've known it. And again, maybe we need a seminar on how the rules and procedures work, because I can tell you this. We have never, well, it's getting almost 40 years, never had a joint meeting with Valverde School District. I've stood up here 10,000 times and asked for it. Should have a joint meeting between all of them. First thing we ought to talk about is the crossing guards and how that deals all went down. Valverde's got shafted on that for 40 years. That started with Nieburger. That's what Pete's talking about with evil Satanistic mayors that we've had and continue to have. This doesn't change. You know, if we get our act together, this city could be the worldwide leader in this area, but it will not if we don't change.
Luis Palomeros is the final speaker.
Hold on, give me a minute. Wow. Ah, give me a minute, don't start the clock. Sorry, guys. I got stuck here. Luis Palomeros, community activist. Now I know how it works, all you got to do is compromise, flip it, change it up Cabrera, the way you want, to get what you want. You finally push this council to the brink, because they're tired of being here five hours later, and you stacking the agenda. That's right, you don't want them to change anything about the meritorial duties, but they compromised with you today, and you got a little bit of what you wanted. And as far as the commissioners and the board, they're great people, I'm glad, congratulations. But you kept on going, "Come, don't worry, we're going to get it this time." Shame on you. I think at the last council meeting two weeks ago, we were talking about, "Give us time." You were talking about the, you know, spreading it, they were talking about spreading it evenly, but they were talking about time, you didn't give them time. You put this on the, on the agenda on Thursday, you didn't give them no time. You know, and what, compromise, what... Wow. As far as Cory Jackson, are you getting ready to give him a proclamation? And Ladonna Jensen that was here today, that you helped, and this guy, Marcus helped, in putting her on the, on the council. Violated the Brown Act, the DA had to come down to investigate and tell you, "Fix it, or else." You were moving her stuff out of her office, Mrs. Baca, Pro Tim Baca, the next day. So saying all that, saying all that, I'm going to stick to the agenda. Boy, you flipped it today really good, huh? I don't have no respect for you, I cannot call you an honorable mayor, you're up here lying, and that's why they had to do these mayor duties again. Because you want too much power to do what you want here. But we want equality, we want all the districts to be able to put their, their comments and their time and their energy, and do what they want in their, do what they need to do for their districts. Not to be under a dictatorship, you're a dictator. You're a dictator. Not to be under a, um, Caesar, you know? Let me wash my hands. You ran and you ran this campaign on a lie. 10,000 voters, a line to half of them, lying and lying, and that's all you've been... And I don't have no respect, and I ain't going to turn the page. Let's kumbaya, let's just get along. When this guy, Marcus, said, "Oh, I'm glad they're gone." Mayor Pro Tim and Carla, Dr. Carla Thornton, "I'm glad they're gone." Meaning, "I'm glad they died," because that's what happened, that's why they're gone. And you're both affiliated with Cory Jack...
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have Ms. Palomeros? This is the third time now, please be respectful to everyone here.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes public comments on this item. That brings us to council deliberation. Please hit your speaker button here if you would like to share any comments. If not, I, I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendations. Mr. City Attorney, yes.
I'm going to need some clarification, I want to make sure we get this absolutely right. So, based on the discussion I just heard about making sure that we have equal representation across the board, even with respect to when you're appointing alternates or additional members, I suggest that we add the following to the provisions that deal with nominations. So, uh, the number 26, "But renominating all members of city commissions, boards, and committees based on recommendations submitted by each district council member to ensure that there is representation on each city commission board and committee from each district, subject to approval of a majority vote of the entire membership of the city council. The mayor is authorized to nominate any additional members to any city commission, board, or committee that already has a representative from each district who is recommended by the respective district council member, provided that such additional members do not result in disproportionate representation by any given district on the respective commission, board, or committee." That sound right? So if there's like, two additional ones, they basically can't be from the same district.
Yes, I, I support that as well, thank you for clarifying that. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendations to include what the city attorney just said, verbatim, and exclude all of the other motions that we already, we already voted on. So I, I make that motion. And I have a second here from Councilmember Marquez. Please vote. And that passes unanimously, 5-0. That brings us to item I-1, which is city council reports. We only have one tonight for RCTC, and that's actually for, for me. If I could find the paper here. Here we go. So, regional activity reports, council meeting, council meeting March 21st, Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting. Tonight I'm providing updates from Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting, held on March 8th. The commission heard a presentation regarding the formula funding distribution within Riverside County, and approved an agreement between the commission and the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, also known as CVAC. The commission approved amending RCTC's 2023 adopted state and federal legislative platform, including sponsoring legislation to increase RCTC's cell tax authority. That concludes my report on the last RCTC meeting. That brings us now to I-2, which is employee association report, and we have none tonight. That brings us to the famous city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, just a three really quick items, I know it's getting late. So, just a reminder, we're having our Spring, Springtastic Festival and egg hunt. That is Saturday, April 1st, at Sunny Me Park, from 9:00 to 12:00. Second item is that, later that evening, we're having our first flashlight egg scramble, which is from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, it's going to be at La Salsa Sports Park. That one is a fee participation, because there's going to be prizes given for people that collect the most tickets. And finally, just a reminder, March 31st, it is Caesar Travis Day, and the city hall is closed, and I would thank the council, mayor and council, for supporting the closure. So all the employees are pretty happy about that as well, so thank you very much. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That now brings us to closing comments from the city council, and we'll go ahead and start with District One, Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate the commissioners from District One, who have been newly appointed. Yes, congratulations. I also wanted to talk about some events I went to, so let me see. I'm sorry, I'm under the weather, I'm not feeling well, but here I am. So, I am, Mayor Pro Tem and I did go to the Little League opening day last Saturday for Canyon Springs Little League, which is close to my heart. When I moved to Myrna Valley in 1990, before going to school, because we moved in the summer, I played Little League with Canyon Springs Little League. I put all three of my children through that league. Actually got to be the T-ball coach for my son's team, so I have a long history with the league. I was very honored for them to have us out, and it was quite an experience to be out there in some rain and cold, and yet hundreds of parents out there, booths, so it was a great event. Right after that, we ran over here and enjoyed the day at the art fest. Magnificent booths, lots of residents out here. Performances on the stage were just amazing, we have so much talent in this city, so it's just overwhelming to be able to see it all in display. So I appreciate everybody who participated, either as a performer or as the residents coming here to appreciate the art. And then since it is Women's History Month, I did want to say that I am saddened, unlike another council member, that we have lost two of our council members last year. Gosh, it's been two years now, it was in 2021. Dr. Carla Thornton, who represented District Two. I believe she was the first black female on our dais. And the late Mary Pro Tem, Victoria Baca, my mother. She was the first Latina on this dais, as well as the first Latina at the Myrna Valley Unified School District's Board of Education. And she's also the person responsible for Baca versus Myrna Valley Unified, which is a nationwide precedent-setting case that allows all of us at any time to address our representatives, elected officials at an open meeting. So, um, I just want to put that out there and say that we have wonderful women throughout the nation, but especially here in Myrna Valley, and two of them we recently lost. And I just want to acknowledge their contributions to our city, and as well as their work, not just here on the dais, but throughout the community as an educator, as an advocate, and as mothers. So, um, I just want to say that here for Women's History Month. And, um, I think that, oh, one more thing. I did leave early a few weeks ago, and I did hear that we would like to discuss talking about dates that we meet, because recently we did have to open up public comments back up, because some people had to go to the school board, because there's a lot of issues happening over at the school. Even some of our officers have gone over recently to speak to the school boards. So I would like to accept the offer to bring back to a future meeting the discussion on the day and times that we meet. So that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have closing comments from Councilmember David Marquez.
Make this quick. I want to congratulate all the appointees tonight from our, um, our committees. Well overdue, I mean, way overdue. And I want to, I want to thank staff for all the work they have put in, while we've been going through all these changes. Excuse me, I'm still having throat problems. For all the changes that we've done with this mayor, changing of duties. Your staff, guys have, you've done a great job out there. I appreciate that. I got to save my voice, then. That's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have District Four, Councilmember Shailena Bernard.
I would like to congratulate all the appointees tonight that we were able to actually get appointed. I also would like to thank staff for bearing with us through these changes. Also, I would like to just kind of, um, address a few things. I get numerous emails, text messages, conversations. There seems to be this, this thing where there's this misconception that for whatever reason, your city council doesn't get along, or that we don't like each other. What you see happening up here is a healthy discussion. What you see happening are adults being able to sit in the room, have a conversation, figure it out, and do what's best for the city overall. So I, I just wanted to put that out there. None of us, in general, do not not like each other, like we leave out of here, and, um, they will walk me to my car, we, we can go, and we can have Starbucks. Like, we don't have an issue. So I would really like to stop that misconception and that narrative. What you see are discussions that the public has requested for years, actually. The public has requested a lot of what you're seeing happening up here. And now that it's happening, what I'm noticing is, the same people that wanted it to happen are now having an issue with it. And I'm sorry, but this is the way the new city council is going to run, and we're working out all the kinks. And with that, I also just want to say, we had our art festival, it was a lot of fun, it was well-attended. Can't wait for the next one. And with that, everybody, please have a good night.
Thank you, council member. Next, we have closing comments from Mayor Pro Tem Delgado.
Thank you, I'll echo the congratulatory comments about the commissions and boards. I told you that they're great. Great people, and I, I can't believe we have that many great people that will be serving on our boards and commissions. And I do appreciate the mayor. And I, and I say that because, honestly, I had reservations that you would be flexible and amenable to compromise, and you, you did. So, not just today, but you're trying, and, and I personally appreciate that. I know that there's a lot of people that don't care, but I do care. Like Councilmember Bernard said, this is a new council, and we're moving forward. I think everybody that has been here for a long time, the Blackards, Tom Gerald, Sadiq, I think that you guys recognize that this is a new council, and we are moving forward, so I appreciate that. We went to, uh, there was a lot going on last week, and we had to split up, and I went to employee appreciation at the City Yard and the Animal Shelter, and that was amazing. Angel came tonight and talked about the MVCEA, and happy, how happy they were with the new contract, and how, um, well their retention is, and more than two-thirds of the MVEC, MVCEA, over 15 years. And that, that's, that, that's because of you guys, so. I, I thought it was really cool, went down there, and they sincerely seemed happy. I would like to make a motion to add to our next meeting. As I, as I stated on record, AB 742 is not good for our community. AB 742 is the assembly bill that eliminates, eliminates the use of police canines from apprehension or crowd control. Currently, there are 18 local agencies around you. 18 local agencies, police agencies, that have publicly opposed this bill. And I feel many cities, I already got several calls from council members and mayors of other cities that they are going to draft a opposition letter. So I would like to make a motion to add to our next regular meeting agenda, a city council resolution expressing the city of Myrna Valley's opposition to Assembly Bill Number 742, which proposes to ban the use of law enforcement canines for arrests and apprehensions. So I'm seeking a second at this time to put it on a future agenda for Myrna Valley's opposition to this assembly bill.
I will second that, Ed.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz. Okay, that passes four yeses and one no.
Thank you. I, I don't have much else, except, uh, Go Team USA, they're playing Japan in the championship, I don't... We lost? Why'd you guys got to tell me, I had it recorded? I had it recorded.
We still got a chat, we got a chat.
They lost?
Well, you'll see later.
Why you guys just couldn't let him give his happiness?
You didn't say spoiler alert, or you didn't want a spoiler alert.
All right, well...
They're just kidding you, they don't know. Go watch it, they don't know.
All right, so honestly, guys, this is, I feel really good about the way things are going up here. I know that there's a lot of contention from the public coming in, and I think that's changing, so honestly, I respect the folks that have been here a long time, the Tom Gerald's, the Blackards, the Donovan Siddiques of Myrna Valley, the Luis Palomeros, Bob Palomeros, because they are the heartbeat of our city, and if it weren't for them always attending these meetings and making them eventful, I think that we wouldn't grow. Honestly, Roy, you said it earlier, we wouldn't grow if we didn't have you guys pushing us and holding us accountable, the David Sights, the, you guys continue to hold us accountable. And I told you that day one, I think I even said, "Hold me accountable" from the first time I got up here and spoke. So thank you guys very much, please be kind to one another. I know spring's, I think that today's the second day of spring, and we feel like Seattle, Washington, but we'll have a good spring. I think it's going to be greener than it has been in a long, long time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So D3 is telling me I got two minutes, so I'll hurry up here and finish up. I want to congratulate again all of the new appointees to our boards and commissions, congratulations to all of you, thank you for stepping up. World Down Syndrome Day, we, for everyone who is celebrating and recognizing that, today is World Down Syndrome Day, so I just want to give a shout-out to everyone who recognizes that. As well as Women's History Month, I want to just say, acknowledge all of the women throughout our communities who do the work that you do to keep us going on a daily basis. The art fest, as was mentioned by some of my colleagues here, the Festival of Arts is the official name for that event that happened here at the amphitheater, absolutely amazing. The weather wasn't the best, but it cleared up for the event itself, so good call from staff, good call Jeremy and the Parks Department, because the sun came out, it was absolutely beautiful, it was perfect. So hats off to staff for putting together a real nice event, everybody had a lot of fun, so thank you for that. Also, in the near future, I'll have more information on this, but, you know, we've had some discussions here, and again, thank you to my colleagues for approving the art program unanimously. I know one of the things that is kind of like slowing things down is funding, but I'm going to be announcing soon with a group of local artists that we've secured a very healthy fund, or amount of funding for a mural here in the city, so stay tuned for that. Rosie Cortez, local Myrna Valley artist, was recognized last week at the Cheech Museum, they reserved the entire museum just for her to showcase all of her work, so really, really proud of her for representing the city of Myrna Valley as well, she's doing absolutely amazing work. I got, with that, just, look, the residents of the city and our respective districts, you know, elected all of us into these seats, and like my colleague said, I mean, I think today's a good example of us, you know, really coming together, putting our differences aside, because we got to focus all the time and our energy on, you know, the issues that are concerning our residents. So with that, I'm at 2 minutes and 20 seconds, and we'll go ahead and we'll conclude tonight's meeting, and we'll go ahead and adjourn at 10:13 p.m. Have a good night, everyone. I'm sorry.